Tina, roll call please.
Mayor Connie Ball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Crawford.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you Tina. The next item is the approval of the minutes for the March 13th, 2018 meeting. You've had a chance to look at those. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion or changes? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. The next item is proclamations. The first one we have is a proclamation for Child Abuse Awareness Month if all those representatives would come to the front. Appreciate you all being here and really appreciate what you all do. Tough job. Keeping children safe and families strong in the supported communities. Whereas children are vital to our communities, future success, prosperity and equality of life, as well as being our most valuable assets. And whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable nurturing homes and communities they need to foster their healthy growth and development. And whereas communities that provide parents with the social support, knowledge of parenting and child development and concrete resources, they need to cope with stress and nurture their children, ensure all children grow to their full potential. And whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare, provided civic organizations, law enforcement agencies and the business community. Now therefore, I Connie Ball do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders and business of Newport, Tennessee to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. In witness whereof, I herein too set my hand and affix the seal of the city of Newport, Tennessee, the 10th day of April, 2018.
One second. Connie, can you push that mic down some bit? Thank you.
I appreciate you all.
Appreciate you, brother.
I'd also like to recognize Nancy Hansel. Is she here? Yes. And Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 8th through the 14th. We appreciate you and your organization very much. You're vital to the safety of our community and we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Connie.
You're welcome.
We've seen a lot of improvement. I think we've seen a lot of improvement with all your organization and stuff. You've done a good job. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Reverend.
The next is the recognition of Animal Care and Control Week, April 8th through the 14th. These are... Yep. Thank you all very much for what you do. It's a tough job and you're to be commended on doing a job well done.
Thank you.
Recognition of Sanford and Linda Overholt.
Just take me just a minute for this. First place I'd like all the departments. I know people might get tired of seeing this, but every one of our departments are police departments, fire departments, wreck department, all of our departments, park recreation, all of them, all do a good job. People don't realize in this town what they've got and to let you out and see what you're doing. And I just wanted to tell you all, appreciate the job you all, the street department, everybody's department. Also, we'd sort of look for people in the community that's made a difference on cleaning up properties. And Sanford and Linda Overholt had been cleaning up the river road up through there. And when we sort of found out, if one person sort of starts cleaning up, we've even got some neighbors beginning to clean up, and things were looking a lot better up there. If we can get just a few more people to get in order up there, that's going to look a lot different along the river up there. But we've sort of got a gold mine here, people would just sort of clean their mess up this little bit. And I just wanted to tell them, I'll talk to them, I've got a little proclamation for them, but they have their certificate and our proclamation, but they had to go back to Florida. And I told them that I just wanted to recognize them. They're not the type of people that wants that, but I'm the type of people that want to give it to them, so thank them.
I feel bad for them going to Florida. Thank you, Mike. Next, reports from City Administrator James Fincham.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a longer agenda than you all do tonight, I believe. The first thing that I've got, and I just handed out the packet to you all to take with you and to look over. We have encountered a lot of problems this election cycle with campaign signs. We got off on a bad start early on with a big banner downtown and people were complaining, other candidates were wanting to put the same kind of thing up, and we had a chore getting it down, but we finally got it down and got it in compliance. When candidates get their qualifying papers, they are given a copy of what our sign ordinance is. And of course, they're expected to comply with it and they agree to comply with it when they qualify. But what I have found, now last election, we didn't have any problems. Nobody complained and didn't have to get into researching it and seeing what all we had and what we could do and what we couldn't do. But this time, we've had to do that. And what I have found is that our sign ordinance is outdated. We've not been enforcing it as it is written. It caused that you can't put an election sign up until 30 days prior to election day. And of course, most places, we've been doing research. Mark's been helping me, he's been doing some research with the surrounding cities. And most places, it's 90 days. And I think that that's something we need to look at doing, is making it 90 days instead of 30. There's other things in there that we don't enforce. The only thing that I've been enforcing this cycle is the size of the signs and we're not exactly complying with that. And one thing that we've ran into has been kind of upsetting to me, and not even been me that's went, but where Mark has been going around trying to get folks to comply, he's met with a lot of hostility. He's been ran off properties and folks have told him they're not going to comply with the ordinance. They don't care what the ordinance says, it's their property and they can do what they want to. And you know, that don't sit real well with me having a background in law enforcement when somebody tells me that they're not going to comply with the law and basically we can't make them. And that's absolutely not true. We can make them, but I hate to get to that. You know, I hate to get to what we're having to start citing people into court and find them 25, up to $50 a day for every day that they're out of whack once we write them a citation. And that's what can happen if we start writing citations for it. And I've tried to avoid that. But you know, people want to do what they want to do. But I would like, I've given you all a copy of what our ordinance is, what the town of Dandridge is, what the town of Greenville's is. Jefferson City has no ordinance on it. They just, it's the Wild West, our brother, anything goes. If you can build it, you can put it up, you know, over there. So I don't think that's a good policy, but that's their choice, that's their town, that's up to them. I do think you've got to regulate it, but as it is right now, it is basically unenforceable. And we just need some guidance. We've got two more elections coming up this year in this cycle. And with the struggles and aggravation that we've had since the signs started going up during this primary, I would appreciate if we could look at trying to amend that, to get something that people can be satisfied, that the public can be satisfied with and that we can enforce. And then, you know, and maybe we can move forward from there and not have these kinds of problems. But right now, and I guess because it's something new that people have never been told, you're not supposed to do this, but I mean, we've met a lot of hostility. And so it's aggravating, you know, when you tell people, and it's a sad thing that Mark gets into especially, and you know, people fuss if we don't do our job and then people fuss when we do. We can't win, you know? And it's all right, as long as you're enforcing it on somebody else, but not on me, you know? And so I commend Mark for trying to do his job he's done. It's like I tell people, he's done, if you want to blame somebody, blame me. I'm the one who tells him to do his job, I'm the one who holds him accountable. And if you want to get mad at somebody, don't get mad at him, get mad at me. And so, you know, I don't like the ordinance as it's written. Again, there are several things in there that we don't currently enforce, like the 30 days, I think that's unreasonable. Nobody, like I say, about everywhere it's 90 days, and I think we need to change ours to 90 days. There's one thing in there that says you can't put like, for the same, you can't have two signs on one property for the same candidate. Like if you want to put two Joe Blow signs on one, like in front of your house, you can only put one by ordinance. We don't enforce that, you know? So there's several things in there, you know, like that, but I think where we could modify it, make it better. And so I'd just like for you all to look at those things, look at those examples, and Mark's still trying to get some more. If we can get some more, I'll get those to you to look at too. But I really think we need to do some modifying to ours to make it to where it's reasonable, it's a reasonable expectation, but at the same time, it's something we can enforce because it's been...
Would you want to just have something put together for us at the next meeting that the way you all think it should be?
Yeah, we can do that.
And let us look at it.
And that way, but you all can call us if you have input or suggestions, you know, or comments, just whatever, because I'd like for y'all to look at it and because a lot of times you all have good ideas that we don't think of and so that you can have some input into if you choose to. But we're going to have to do something because it's just been a massive headache and you know, like I say, it's just really hard for me to deal with when somebody tells me, I'm not going to comply and you can't make, you know, because yeah, we can, but I'd rather not, you know? I would choose not to over a dang election sign, have to get somebody from court and find them just because they want to be, in my opinion, petty about something. But that's what you run into. Okay. Last night, we had the mayor's debate here for the county mayor candidates. We had a good crowd here. Gary helped put that together. I thought it went very well. It was good questions, good participation, and only two candidates that didn't show up, that they were, everybody was appreciative that we made the place available to them to hold their debate. But it did go very well and I thought it was very well received. We livestreamed it on the Facebook and I thought it went very well. I want to start, I want to make you aware, I mentioned this to somebody that I've got who's had a chance to talk to because time's kind of of the essence on it. But we've got a little bit of money left in the city hall budget that we can use and I want to try to, I want to redo the start, I want to probably eventually redo it all, but I want to begin in the back where we have the Rhythm on the River concerts and replace the grass back there. When, none of you all were here, I was down at the police department when it happened, but I've talked to a lot of employees who helped do it. When we first sowed grass back here, instead of, it was a gravel parking lot. The whole place in the back was a gravel parking lot. And instead of digging that gravel parking lot out, what they did was they just, at the direction of somebody, it wasn't because nobody didn't want to do it the right way, but you do it the way you're told. But they were told just to put some dirt down and sow some grass. And that's what they did. Well, you've got about two to three inches of dirt and you've got grass trying to grow a root system and it has nowhere to go. And every summer, the grass dies back here. It turns brown and it dies. And then we're having, you know, it looks bad all summer long and without digging it out and putting it back, getting rid of the gravel and putting dirt in and then getting your grass, it's never going to do right. And so I'm going to begin work on that in the next few weeks, digging that out back there and doing it a section at a time, but begin with the section where the concert is because that's where all the foot traffic is in the summertime. And redo that and then work our way around over the rest of this year and into next year and get, because if you look at, even in the front, and that wasn't the case in the front, it's just we don't have a good stand of grass in the front. So I want to try to get the grass looking better in front.
Might open up goose season, that might be.
Yeah.
But in the back, all around the back, the problem is that we'll never get a good stand of grass back there, no matter what we do, without digging out that old parking lot. And we've got the equipment to do it, the people to do it. It's just going to take a little time and some money for some topsoil to go back in its place, but we've got the money and the budget to do it. Just wanted to make you aware of it, make the public aware in case they see us back there working, what we're doing and why, but it's just trying to get a good stand of grass back there instead of having it dead all summer long. The budget, we've got the budget done. The proposed budget, right here it is. Tonight, after the meeting, before you leave, please get a copy of this. We've got one for each of you, your names are on them. Get one to take with you and be studying it and we'll have a workshop to go over it. And that is my next item on the agenda. Normally, we have the workshop for, the budget workshop, the first Tuesday in May. Well, the first Tuesday in May is election day. So I need for you all to decide, do you want to have it on election day? If so, it's no big deal, we can do it. We've had meetings before on election day. Or would you choose to have it another day? And so I just need you all to, I just need you to set a workshop date for the budget.
I don't have any problem with the Tuesday. First up though.
Y'all okay with that? Anybody not?
That's fine with us. We just want to make sure everybody was aware of it. So go ahead and do it, the first Tuesday.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
What time?
It's up to you, Mayor. You're the man.
Is everybody okay with 5:00 or 5:30? Is that one?
5:30.
5:30. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The last thing I have, we have put several surplus vehicles on Gov. Deals that we have replaced and need to get rid of. And so just to make, just for a public announcement, they can go to, right now, anybody can go to Gov. Deals and bid on any of those. It's an open auction to the public. And so we do currently have a car and some trucks on Gov. Deals. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
James, could you comment publicly about this new red light? You know, I've got, I catch more conversation about that saying that was a city...
Sure.
...city done project and people need to know what, who forced the hand. It's a good project, but go ahead.
Yes. I'd be glad to. And I actually did that very same thing a couple of weeks ago at Quan's. Yeah, I've been hitting that very same thing. You know, a lot of people, and I think on social media, and I'm not a social media hound, so I rely on my staff to tell me what's happening up there. But you know, we've had people that have criticized, wanted to know why did the city put a light there? Why did the city spend all this money? There's other things they could have spent the money on. It's a waste of time, it's causing problems with traffic. It was not the city's idea to put a light there. The T-Dot, the Tennessee Department of Transportation and Southern Railway came to us and wanted to close that crossing. And they actually wanted to close two crossings. So they wanted to close that crossing and also the one at the police station. And we were opposed to that. We said, no, we need the crossing at the police station because emergency vehicles have to get out and go on calls. We need this crossing here because it's a main artery in the morning for traffic going to the grammar school, coming from North Street. And no, we don't want to corrode either one of these crossings. And so T-Dot said that it was upon them to improve the safety of this crossing because there have been serious accidents there in the past. And they said that what they would like to do is to put up a traffic control device to make that crossing safer and that they would pay for it. Now, they said we didn't have to let them do that. They couldn't make us do that. But if we chose not to do that, then we were taking liability upon ourselves because we had not allowed them to make the crossing safer. So that then liability could attach, not necessarily a guarantee, but the liability could attach to us because we thwarted their efforts to make the crossing safer. And that was not something I was willing to do. I brought, if I recall correctly, I came in and announced to you all that the state of Tennessee, we were going to have to put a light on the other side anyway because we were getting, the state was paying for the lights on the other street, on Broadway, on State Highway, and this was the one we were going to have to pay for because the state originally was not going to pay for it. But this gave us an opportunity to get the light paid for and plus not to take on liability in case somebody wants to get run over and killed. And so the state paid for it, the state wanted it, we never wanted it, the state wanted it, they kind of insisted on it, and they paid for it. So it wasn't something that we wanted to do and it was not anything that we spent taxpayers' money on. It was something that we just agreed to, to keep from being liable if there was an accident.
The reason they put that light on this side is, you don't know how many people, when the light was across the street, they'd pull up on the railroad track and stop.
Yeah. It was to take this side of the railroad track.
Yeah, so that's why it's over there.
Now, one thing we have done, I had Ben to put up a sign right there that says, proceed right on red when clear. And people are starting to pick up on that and they're starting to do that and the traffic seems to be flowing pretty good. And the light turns really quick.
Go right and left on red and then educate, take care of it.
Yeah, well, the state won't let you do that.
I know.
You get liable on that too. Because we used to have those down there and after somebody got hit, we had to quit that. So, but that, yes, that's a good, that's a good thing to keep trying to educate people on. I've been having to do that because so many folks, once again, what we seem to fall victim to too many times is misinformation. Where folks hear a rumor, somebody said, somebody said, and I heard, and that's the truth because it was on Facebook. And we're constantly having defenders up on there. Gary does a good job on that. He keeps our flank covered on social media. But it's just one of those, it's the times we live in where, you know, there's just so much bad information out there that you're constantly fighting that battle. And the sad part is that folks will believe the lie and they won't believe the truth. You know, they'll believe whoever says something, but then when you try to correct it on your line, you know? So I don't know how you deal with that, but we do the best we can. But that's, yeah, that's a good thing that needs to get out there as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, speaking of traffic lights, have you heard from your contact back when they used...
It's still in the process on the other two. And that's state funded. That's, to my knowledge, I've never known the city of Newport to pay for an installation of any red lights. Now, once the red light's installed, we're responsible for the maintenance of that light. But I've never known us to ever pay for a red light, to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a report from the Tanner Preservation Light.
We have that.
Thank you. Okay, item eight, under Old Business, the item from the public hearing, consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2018-06.
And Mayor Oliver, the caption of that ordinance into the record, it's ordinance 2018-06, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Newport, Chapter Six, provisions governing used districts, Section 601, R-1, low density residential districts, and adding item nine, use is allowed as special exemption by approval of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Thank you, Terry. Do we have a motion to approve on the second reading?
I have a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. I hear none. Moving on to New Business, item nine, Section A, is consideration of administration services for the ARC project. Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know what exactly you guys got in your book. This is procurement for the professional services of the ARC, which is the Tanner Project. I'd like to hire community development partners, worked with them on several projects. We're both, both us and Evan's group, it's Evan Sanders' group, we're pretty comfortable working with each other on this, and he's also the only firm that turned in a procurement letter, so we kind of got to hire him if that's okay with you guys.
So what you got?
Got a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposes, no. No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Gary. Item B, discussion of work ethic diploma program. Love Henderson.
I won't keep you as long, I know how it is to want to get out of a meeting.
Been learned done that.
I'm going to be taking this in front of the CLB, but I felt like the city council needed to know about this program too. This is a program that started, and what I've done, I have printed off how it started, that way you all can take it home and read it. And I just want to briefly go over just what it is and what it stands for. But Chris Edmonds started this, he wrote a grant a few years ago, and the work ethic diploma is where students, the seniors, can obtain 20 points on the work ethic diploma. And I'm going to explain to you in a second what they get to do with those 20 points. On the second page, you have the standards. Okay, seniors has to go by these standards here and they get so many points. And it's like a job. They get so many points for the attendance they have, good attendance, no tardies. They even get attendance if they compete, they get attend, not attendance, they get points if they compete. They get points if they pass a drug screen. They get so many points if they have a good GPA. Now, what we done this year, you know, on a public job, most of the time you get a drug screen. So when we give the drug screens, we did it at random. Myself and the school resource officers, we never told these students that had to have a drug screen when they was going to get it. So they was randomly given the drug screen and they all passed, which I thought was great considering high school kids, they didn't know they was going to get it. But now, once again, you see you get five points for the drug screen. We had only 11 kids at Cock County and 12 at Cosby that had to take the drug screen to earn their 20 points, which means they earned their points by being, having good attendance, having a good GPA, competition, you know, they're already enrolled in a secondary school. So we even had a student at Cock County that had 25 points without taking the drug screen. So, and there's only myself who can go in and put the points in. I can do it at both high schools, because as you know, I teach at Cosby and Cock County. There's only one other person at each school and that's a guidance counselor and one at Cosby, one at Cock County that can do the points. The kids are not allowed to put the points in. They have to show proof to us that they have obtained these points. Okay, so what happens is, I'm going to go a little farther. The next page, I told you I'd get through this quick. This is the companies who support this. There's 40 companies who support this. Okay, if a student obtains the work ethic diploma, they get 20 points or more. When they go to graduate, they get to wire a cord for graduation to show that they completed this. They get a sticker that goes on their high school diploma. Now, say for instance, they don't want to go on further their education. If you notice, you've got at work here, okay? They go straight in, they don't want to go to school, they just want to get a job. They go to at work, they look at that diploma, they see they've got that sticker. That moves them up closer to a job interview. They don't have, they're not at the bar, it moves them up closer. If they further their education, they go to TCAD or they go on to two-year, four-year college, they have that on their diploma. Once they're done with their career and they see that they did this in high school and they've got their career complete, then that moves them up closer to, they're guaranteed five interviews. Guaranteed five interviews. And as you can see, we've got several here in Newport. We've got American Appliance, Phoenix Closures, we've got several on here that already supports this. And on the front of this paper, the very front page, you see that I put Chris Edmonds' email. So if you know of any business that would like to participate in this, you need to contact him. So this is something good and it really helps the kids, say, hey, I need to be at school, I don't need to be laying out, I get points, I don't need to be tardy to school, I need to try to do a good GPA, I need to further my education. And the number we have this year, we have 73 kids graduating from Cosby and 40 has obtained the work ethic diploma. We have 273 at Cock County so far, that could change, and we have... We have 273 at Cock County so far, that could change, and we have 45 at Cock County that has obtained the work. So, I think the very first year that this has been implemented, that that was really good. So, if you know of anybody that wants to participate, if you have any kids, ask, they need to come and see me, and this is just something good, to help the kids to learn what it's like to be on a job, to help them, whether they go on into the field, what they want to do, or if they just want to go and get a job straight out of high school. Do you see anybody have any questions?
Appreciate your job.
Yes, that sounds really good.
It's really a good program, it really is, so, and I was really impressed at how many students without the drug screen had 20 or more, or more points. Like I said, the one little girl had 25, and she didn't even take the drug screen. So, she had good attendance, a high GPA and everything. So, if you don't have any questions, I'm done.
Thank you, Love.
All right.
Okay, the next item is comments from citizens. Anybody? Yes, honey?
I'm Carly Robinson with the officer on agent, I wanted to let you know that we're updating our senior service directory, we update this directory every couple of years. Last time, the council purchased an ad, and I'm hoping I can count on you guys to purchase another ad for our directory. Last time, we printed 4,000, they were gone in four months, so I'm going to try to print 5,000 this time, so, I'm going to have to raise a little bit more monies.
How much are your ads, Carly?
Excuse me?
How much are your ads?
They start out at 250, and 500, 750, and 1,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes?
I appreciate James talking about traffic lights. I know, I've lived in this town for a long time, and I've heard you all talk about what these traffic signals cost, and I know what a nightmare it has been for you, and I'm glad you're not involved in this space. We have got 12 traffic signals at one intersection, or across the way, and if I remember correctly, those traffic signals cost thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars. We've got traffic going two directions, but yet you've got a traffic light for the wrong direction. I don't know what do design this, so how much do the signals cost? Do you have any?
About 200,000 to 300,000, depending on the intersection.
With the need we've got, for students, or is it resource officers, or the state's, they're trying to find Bernie, you know, we could've saved the burn to Bernie and had one traffic signal that went four miles.
The new guidelines that the state has, the way they have built them with the handicap side box and the buttons to push across, that's their, it's the law that that's the way they have to install them now.
Well, if you know where the town of Bernie, the first screen, say we didn't go to get it.
We agree with you.
We agree with that. Anyone else? Last caller.
My name is Steel John Thacker, I was here last month, I came to present a bill for damage done to me by the utility company, and the broadband came up, I made some comments about the broadband, my wife looked on the internet yesterday, and it appeared I got edited out, and the man from Newport Utilities said I didn't know what I was talking about. So, I brought a little information for you tonight, that broadband costs currently $7,000 per customer to just originally install. That'd be, it takes six, seven years just to pay off what it costs to install it, then once it's installed, you have to pay to keep it going, and the debt mounts up. So, give you some examples, Marstown did theirs, they've been going at it since '06, and they are currently $11.6 million in debt. Memphis, Tennessee, is their utility decided that they would do it, and they spent $32 million putting in the broadband in '99, and in 2007, they sold it for $11.5 million at a loss of $20.5 million, couldn't make it work. Then Clarksville, Tennessee, they decided they would do it, and they wound up spending $75 million, and they're currently owed $17.3 million. Pulasi, Tennessee, did their broadband network, and currently, they generated a debt of $15.8 million. Tulsa, Tennessee, they spent $17 million, and they're currently millions of dollars in debt. Nashville opted not to do it, too expensive. Chattanooga, they're half a billion dollars in debt with their little broadband episode. So, it doesn't make money, you're competing against other companies doing the same thing, and you're starting from ground zero. My understanding Newport Utilities is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, that means they do not make any money, they were set up, whatever it costs to operate, passed on to the consumers, and that's what your utility bills is based on, is what it costs to get you your utility. To do broadband, they had no money, they had to borrow it. Now, they have a debt, money borrowed to install the broadband, what pays the debt? They don't have broadband customers, who's paying this debt? Water, power, and sewer, that's the only income that they have, unless they're doing something else nobody knows about. So, over the years, same results everywhere, just debt, debt, debt. And I, for one, do not want my utility bills go up, because you want to play with broadband. Now, that's been my whole point all along. So, if Newport Utilities want to have a public discussion with me, I will bring more information, this is just the tip of the iceberg. I would have thought there would have been more consideration before you started such a project, and look at what other people did, and how it worked out for them. Other municipalities saw it, and they didn't do it, so why did we want to do it? You know? Newport Utilities' only income is from power, water, and sewer customers. When they do get broadband operating, it will take multiple years just to pay off the initial installation debt, before it starts making any money. So, during the process, what covers this debt? The only source of income. I'd love to be proven wrong, and I don't have a dog in the race, basically, other than I don't want my utility going up, I don't want to pay for the broadband. Marstown found out, they quit expanding, because they did the city and the close big subdivisions, they promised every electric customer would have it, they totally quit expanding, because they're so far in debt, same thing happens everywhere they try it. It's just not a feasible idea to try it. Sorry, but that's just the way it sets up. But Newport Utilities man, he said I didn't know what I was talking about, so prove me wrong. And I also brought you the fine bill that is going to move the broadband, and I brought you the final bill for damages to my house.
Okay, thank you.
Your insurance carrier refused to pay it, they said they're not going to pay, don't bore out on Newport Utilities, they paid enough for you already.
Okay. David, you have something?
We've got a juggle split cleanup Friday from 9:00 to 1:00. We're cleaning up down there for everybody to share in, I'd like to see all the guys up front, and all the peanut growers show up for at least two hours on Friday, if they can make it. There's a cleanup down there, 9:00 to 1:00. We're looking at my 400 bags of trash, and it's probably about my time.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed?
Yes, sir.